The meeting is streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as the town's Facebook. I will call the meeting to order. This evening is Monday, September 22, 2025. Welcome, everyone, to the Sykesville Mayor and Town Council meeting. The meeting is called to order at 7:00 PM. That stands for the Pledge of Allegiance and a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. All right. I'll turn to the staff here and ask if there are anyone, if there is anyone signed up for public comment.
There are two, Mayor. First up is Adam Schuhart.
All right, thank you. And Adam, I'll just read a brief statement here as you are planning to speak to us. If you could keep your statements limited to three minutes. If you want to go past that, we'll have to make a motion to do so. So when you step forward, please provide us your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Adam Schuhart. I live here at the Hawkeridge Farm at 4019 Hawkeridge Lane. I am here to make a request to install a bat house, a public bat house for the community right there by kind of where we live. We contacted the town manager to see if this was a viable solution. And one of our steps was to come to the council and make a proposal if it is okay. We are going to donate the bat house, if accepted, for this request and other utilities to be able to put the bat house up in the local area. The problem is, we have bats that are now occupying not only my house currently, but the neighbors' houses in the general area. In the Hawkeridge Farm area, there's a retention pond put in there by the linear trail area. So we're thinking, instead of getting rid of and excluding them from the house area, which that has to happen because that's a health problem, we would try to at least keep the bats in the area to help mitigate the mosquitoes in that area. So that is my comment to humbly request to see if the council approved the town council to install the bat house.
Yeah, no, I thank you for presenting that to us and passing that information along. I'm certainly in favor of the ecological benefits of bats and, but not in my attic.
Correct.
So, yes, fantastic. Thank you for your thoughtfulness, and we'll talk more with staff about it. Thank you.
I heard "bat house" at first.
Bat house.
That's another project.
Fantastic. Well, we'll get the details about...
Take some extra strategic planning.
We'll get the details from staff with respect to location and logistics. Thank you.
Next up is Chris Bushman.
Chris. You know the drill, Chris.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Wish I had something as cool to talk about as a bat house now, but I'm all for it. I'm here again to accommodate my continuing series of comments and use my three minutes tonight, give or take, hopefully, to continue that, actually. You know, I came here to begin with to basically thank everyone for all the work that you do and all of town employees. And in the context of that, then I spoke about the value of the police department. Well, tonight is Public Works Night because I wanted to thank Derek, Mr. Shreves, and his crew in particular, and not just the general thank you for what they do, because there is a lot of that. There's a lot of things that are in order there, but to recognize an aspect of what the Public Works does that maybe doesn't get talked about that much. And that is that they are the face of the town. I mean, when I walk my dog around, when I'm around, who do I see? I see you guys sometimes, for sure. But I see the Public Works guys. They are the ambassadors for the town. And we'll make sure that they know that is a critical role that they play. They're the face of this town. And you guys know my background now. In the context of running the state parks, we always knew that that was incredibly important, to see the staff. When you go anyplace, you like to see the staff. It gives you a feeling that you're safe and things are being taken care of. Somebody's taking care of the place. Things are well-run. It just gives you a different feeling. And the Public Works Department provides that in this town. And I just think that that's something that needs to be recognized. When we would do our customer service surveys, we would always hear that it enhanced the person's visit to the park. And I believe the same thing applies here. It enhances the feeling of being a resident of this town when you see the staff. And you guys do your job. You're often in here. You do get out, I know you do. But who do we see all the time? It's the Public Works guys. So I just wanted to thank them in particular for playing that role and adding to that quality of life component that we have. Last thing I'll say is to Ian, I'm up to two lacrosse balls. That's two less hypersonic projectiles or whatever he calls them.
Yes, that's the one.
I'm keeping an eye out for them, I got two already, so.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, absolutely, Mr. Bushman. Thank you. That brings us to our first item on the agenda, which is inclusive, which is the consent agenda, which only includes the minutes from September 8. I might just call out something that may have already been mentioned to the clerk, but the minutes from September 8th meeting is missing the name of the council member who motioned to approve the consent agenda from the meeting before. And I'm getting a head shake from the clerk, so that's been corrected?
Excuse me.
All right, great. Do we have a motion to approve the amended minutes?
Would the amended minutes be approved?
Thank you. And that's Councilman Dyer there behind those dark glasses. Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Councilman Keenan, all in favor of the approval of the consent agenda? Please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that is unanimous adoption of the minutes. First item of new business is to consider/discuss Act on Introduction of Ordinance Number 2025-05, an ordinance of council of... An ordinance of the council of the town of Sykesville authorizing the acquisition of certain real property located northwest of Main Street at Norwood Avenue, Sykesville, Maryland, 21784, comprising approximately 4.057, approximately, plus or minus acres, being the property identified as MAP 200, parcel 4323. I'll probably just turn this over to Joe. I have some things we want to say, but we can do that during question and answer.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, this is an opportunity that's presented itself to the town and it's something that we've talked about in closed session for at least a few meetings now. Again, this was an opportunity that we've been working on with the property owner for at least the last several months and now is ready for council action. So again, this property located off of Norwood Avenue, just over four acres, represents a strategic opportunity for the town to capitalize on several items, particularly pedestrian connectivity. So again, when you look at the town's comprehensive plan, it talks about one of the major goals and objectives of the town is to look for different ways to get people in and out and around downtown outside of a vehicle. So this particular property is identified as one of those strategic properties both in the comprehensive plan and in the 2019 connectivity study that we did. This particular property also represents a little bit of an opportunity for us to look at different town operations. Mainly, our Public Works Department. It does satisfy one of the potential relocation areas for where we could put the Public Works facility, should we decide to relocate it from its existing facility. I know that may sound somewhat far-fetched, but given the existing location and the potential reuse possibilities of where the facility is today, that could either be reused for commercial use or reused for just expanding parking opportunities for downtown. And then again, we never really had another site for Public Works to go to. Well, this would obviously resolve that particular issue. The last piece is, or the last at least benefit I see with the potential purchase of this property is just general strategic value. So again, anytime that we have the opportunity to control property, particularly of this size in and around downtown, it allows us to kind of control our own destiny with what actually happens there rather than it just hitting the open market. The proposal before you tonight does include a 100... The sales contract does include a 120-day study period. This will allow the town to work through some, I guess, just general studies of the property, namely, an environmental study. So we did receive a targeted brownfield assessment grant that would cover both Phase 1 and Phase 2 studies for the area. We at least hope to get a Phase 1 done before that 120-day study period ends. But again, the grant would continue regardless. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting scheduled on Wednesday with the EPA to talk about that schedule. So again, we do expect at least a Phase 1 to be completed before that 120-day period is up. One thing that we did not include in my staff report, and I apologize for that, was that the sales contract does include also a leaseback option to the current property owner. So that is up to 12 months outside of renegotiating with the council. So again, it would be basically a month-to-month lease on the property, on the existing operation of the property. So the financial impact, again, it's a $525,000 purchase price that's being proposed. That money would come out of the town's unassigned fund balance. So if you remember from the last treasurer's report, we have just over $1.6 million in our unassigned fund balance. So again, this is not any of our existing reserve funds, so our residual fund, our repaving reserve, our capital reserve, all of those things are not being touched. This is money that was free to be assigned where we needed to put it. We would take the $525,000 out of that unassigned fund balance. Since the council pack came out, we did get one comment or one email from a resident on Windswept Court. I believe it was mostly positive. I think everybody else actually did see that email. It was mostly positive. There were some concerns, obviously, just from a future planning standpoint, to make sure that anything that is proposed on that particular property does go through the, let's just say, the planning process so that we make sure we can work out any potential concerns of the residents around Windswept Court. And then, really, I think they were just excited about the potential connectivity aspect of it and how it would actually be implemented. So that being said, obviously, staff is recommending that council does approve the introduction of this ordinance and allows us to move forward with adoption at our next meeting. And staff's available for any questions, should anybody have any.
Thank you, Joe. That was very concise and appreciated. I'll start far right. Any questions for staff, Councilman Keenan?
Not at all.
Thank you. Councilman Reese? Councilwoman Lisa Giroff. You are up. You're good.
I do not have any questions.
Welcome. Council?
I don't have any questions because I've already spoken to you, but I do want to go on the record that I am very interested in what the EPA has to say. That land has been used for many years, and PCVs were thought to be harmless many, many years ago. And now we know how truly dangerous they are. So I'd be very interested in hearing about the results as soon as I can. Other than that, yep, we're ready to go.
Awesome. Thank you. I just want to say how psyched I am about this possibility and something that, you know, I think has been our... As a collective group and certainly my focus for the last four or five years. And when this opportunity became known to myself, it was really an exciting potential, and now it feels real. So is there any need for more questions? Are we good? If not?
Just a comment on just appreciation for the due diligence, Joe, that you've done, the back and forth and the questions that council's had and kind of getting all of that. I really appreciate it.
Awesome. Any, if there's no further hearing, no further questions, remind everyone of the motion or ask for one if somebody's ready to give it.
I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2025-05 as presented and to direct staff to schedule the public hearing for next meeting Tuesday, October 14. Is that right?
Yeah, that is right.
Second.
Thank you. So the motion on the table is placed by Councilman Keenan and seconded by Councilwoman Jeremiah Schofield. There it is. Any need for debate? All right, then. With that motion being made, do I have a vote? And a raise of hands for all in favor? Any opposed? Awesome. The motion to approve the introduction of ordinance 2025-05 as presented and to direct staff to schedule the public hearing for Tuesday, October 14 is unanimously approved. Brings us to our second and final item of new business, which is to consider/discuss Act on the Introduction of Ordinance Number 2025-06 and ordinance to amend the adopted budget of the town of Sykesville for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. I'll turn it over to Joe with just one quick. The proposed revision includes an increase in revenues and expenditures that will off-balance $549,300.
So this is, obviously, we've been through the budget revision process multiple times with this council. This is a little earlier than we would normally propose a budget revision, but because of the action we just took prior to this one, we wanted to make sure we went ahead and updated the budget, given the, let's just call it, the size of the potential purchase. So again, it does include an increase in revenues and expenses by $549,000. Several minor tweaks were made to several line items. I'll just hit some of the highlights unless council has a specific question about all of them. So in the miscellaneous revenue category, we did increase police department grants by $22,680. These are all grants that the police department has been awarded over the last several months. So now we can actually recognize that revenue. And then the unassigned fund balance, based on, again, the last action, we will be increasing the use of the unassigned fund balance by $525,000.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe.
I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you. I thought, yeah.
I was just saying, specific expenses.
Good.
The salary line item in public safety was increased by $10,000. That's, again, directly related to a retention grant that was received. We did increase the equipment maintenance line item by $15,000. So several meetings ago, I want to say months ago, but meetings ago, we did approve an extended warranty for the license plate readers. And this actually recognizes some work that had to be done to the cameras along Main Street. So again, that's why that line item had to be increased. Money well spent on the cameras, by the way. They've been working fantastically.
Fantastic. That's great news.
And then the last item released in the public safety department was increasing the community outreach and advertising line item by $2,500, again, because of a grant that was received for that particular purpose. And then finally, just the capital outlay. So that's the expense aside of the revenue that we increased by $525,000 for general government property to purchase the property on Norwood.
Awesome.
So again, unless there's any questions, staff is recommending move to introduce the ordinance 2025-06 as presented.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for staff, Councilman Keenan?
I have none. Thank you.
Councilmember Reese?
No.
Council, oh, she's already shaking her head.
So I do have one. So, you know, we've been questioned in the past about sort of open government sort of practices. So obviously, we are talking about this purchase very openly, and we're going to have a public hearing, which means people have the opportunity to come, voice any opinions that they have in reference to the issue. And then we would take all of their opinions very seriously in reference to what this would have to say. Is it a foregone conclusion that we would move forward with something since we're moving this budget line item?
It is not a foregone conclusion. It just means that we have the opportunity to do that if the money is moved. Is that...
Yep. So that's, I wanted just to have that sort of discourse here because just because some money moves around doesn't necessarily mean that money can't move back if another decision were to be rendered down the line in reference to this. And then maybe the last thing I'd say in reference to it is that there was a connectivity group that was put together some years ago. Can't remember the exact number of years ago. It was like four or five years ago.
2019.
2019-ish. And I had the opportunity to actually serve on that group when I was part of the planning commission. And then, and then I sort of moved away from it when I moved into the council. But we were looking for a location to be able to bridge the residents to Main Street in a safe way. And this would offer a way to do that in the future. And that would be a different project outside of this one. This sort of presents a foundation, as you mentioned before, about the possibility. But again, we want to encourage any feedback that the public has in reference to this whole process. That's what makes, you know, doing this process, you know, is sort of how local government works. The last thing I'd say is that there's also been questions about, what do you do behind closed doors, right, when you have a closed session? Well, what you do is you do strategic planning about contractual-related matters. They happen behind closed doors. And it gives us an opportunity to set up things like this in the future, like we're doing here. But we always come back whenever we're going to make any big decisions, and we talk about it openly and publicly. And so again, this is just meant to be a little bit of an education about what our processes are because sometimes people ask us lots of things. And in the last election, and we've talked about it here, we got scrutinized because we don't do things in an open way or whatever. And that's absolutely empirically false. And so I just want to just put it out there that this is our process, that what we're doing. And it gives people an opportunity to weigh in and have an opinion about how we build the town together. So thank you for that. Let me go on a little bit of...
No, you didn't. It actually was very nicely said, so I appreciate you, Councilman. Thank you. How about you, Councilman Dyer?
I have no comments.
Okay.
Good.
Fantastic. Without any further questions for staff, I will remind you of their recommendation to move to introduce ordinance Number 2025-06 as presented to direct staff to schedule the public hearing for Tuesday, October 14, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Fantastic. So the motion is made by Councilwoman Giroff and seconded by Councilwoman Reese. Any further need for debate or discussion of any kind? All right, hearing now, I will call for the vote. All in favor of the motion on the table to introduce ordinance Number 2025-06 as presented and direct staff to schedule the public hearing for Tuesday, October 14, 2025? Please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that's a unanimous 6 to 0 approval of that motion. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to our announcements and reports section of our agenda. I will begin with the first announcement, and that is that our next meeting, as you guessed it, a Tuesday, not a Monday, because of Columbus's Day. On October 13, our meeting will be on October 14, Tuesday, 2025. We have volunteer opportunities available as a crossing guard and on the police auxiliary. Email town@sykesville.net for more information if interested in any of these positions or in any fashion wanting to volunteer with the town. Brings us to staff updates, Joe. You're back on that beautiful microphone.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Is it working properly? Quick update on the streetscape project. So we were able to open Oklahoma Road, Oklahoma Avenue, sorry, last week, a little bit of a soft opening. We did have to adjust the newly installed lights above the roadway after we opened it. But again, all that worked out fine. Bird seems to be operating exactly the way we expected it to. Today, I know they closed the intersection of Baldwin and Oklahoma so that they can start the work on the crosswalk. Reason they wanted to wait until today to do it was so that they could get all of that work done before this coming weekend. So the goal is to have that crosswalk completed before we hit Friday evening. Also, behind the French twist, they did, they poured the new curbing this morning. They hope to have the landscaping done again by the weekend as well. So little odds and ends, but, you know, things are coming together.
Couple of questions in reference to that. Is there any... So one observation that I saw when I was at the farmer's market this weekend, the transition that goes along Oklahoma is a little rough. And so there's a little bit of a bump up that happens. And then right as you hit the concrete, from the pavement to the concrete, there is a section that's about, you know, an inch or so where it's settled down, where the asphalt has settled. And I did see a person that was attending the farmer's market trip over that area. And I wonder for people that deal with various types of accessibility-related issues, whether or not anything can be done to sort of level that out just a little bit. And then I'm wondering what, so that's one question. And the second question is, what are the plans in terms of timing for when that bump up will be resolved and a little bit more flattened out, going from, you know, essentially the newly, the new cobblestone, if you will, to the rest of the roadway?
Yeah, so once the new crosswalk that goes from Fountain Park over to the post office is installed, I want to say paving is scheduled for a week after that.
Okay.
So if not next week, the week after. So that's...
So that'll level it out?
Yeah, it'll all be milled down, and it'll be a fresh coat of asphalt for everything, and hopefully a lot more level than what you see today.
Is there anything that can be done in the meantime to sort of level out the one area? What I wouldn't want to have happen is some, like, this was a little bit older person that I saw, and, you know, I don't want anyone to get hurt.
Yeah, yeah. And again, we could talk with the contractors to try to get something done temporarily to make sure that that transition...
I took a picture. I'll give it to you after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dyer, anything for staff on those lines? Okay, you can continue, please, sir.
So I mentioned this at our last meeting. Those are the two stormwater projects, the one on Norwood and the one on Central. Obviously, it's not on the agenda tonight, so we were not able to get pricing ready for this meeting. However, we will be ready for the meeting on October 14.
Excellent.
So we did make, we've, now that some of the streetscaping is moving forward or almost completed, you know, we thought now was the time to actually submit our formal letter to the State Highway Administration to request transfer of Barrelin 851, or also known as Main Street and Springfield Avenue, over to the town. This is something that's going to take some time. I don't want the public to hear that and think like, okay, next week, it's going to be our road. But at least we've initiated those discussions, and at least we can start that process. I think at a minimum, this is a six-month journey that we're about to take with the state highways. So again, wanted to let everybody know that at least that request has been made. Since today, I believe today is the first day of fall, just wanted to remind everybody that it will be leaf season coming up. So again, we will be rolling out our leaf collection services again this year. We are going to keep it similar to last year, where we basically asked everyone on Mondays to have their leaves blown out to the road or at least a curb line so that our guys can get to them and then kind of see how that goes. We usually can't get to all of the larger piles on Monday, but just be patient with us, and we'll make sure that we get to it throughout the rest of the week. And then finally, just a bit of congratulations. So our clerk has been working on her master's degree for several years now? Two years now?
Four years.
Four years. And today, she had actually received, I guess, her final grade on her thesis. So she is officially a master of public administration.
Congratulations, Chris. Absolutely. Hard work and perseverance, that's what that is. So thank you. Good job.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Anything on the libitories? Let's scroll.
No update. I do know the architects have been working with MHT, coming up, and directly with MHT to come up with a, I guess, a design that's going to work for everybody. So it's like, I know those conversations are ongoing.
Thanks.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. So that brings us to our report from our chief of police regarding public safety. Thank you, chief.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening, chief.
If you'll indulge me just for a second, I wanted to touch base briefly with you about the reason why I'm wearing a morning badge on.
Yes, sir.
A strout on my badge. Respect to three Pennsylvania officers from the Northern York County Regional Police Department. They were ambushed last week. Got to tell you, this one hit close to home for us, not only because of the proximity, but the fact that several of our staff live in that area. And actually, one of our staff was actually very familiar and acquainted with one of the officers that was killed. So I would just ask that you keep that police department and those officers and their family in your thoughts and prayers. We're going to send a small contingent to the funeral on Thursday just to represent our town. So heartbreaking incident. Yeah. Thanks.
Unthinkable, really.
Indeed, it is.
Yeah.
Okay. On the lighter side, let's move on to the public safety report. On the lighter side, let's move on to the public safety report. As you can see, a lot of events during this period, covering September second to the fourteenth, but surprisingly, very few incident reports were written, only four speak of, and none of those reports were of any significant criminal activity. So I would entertain any questions you have about any of those incidents or events.
For the first time, I have zero to even consider. Yeah, thank you.
Excellent.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay.
I did want to mention a couple other things real briefly. As you know, Lieutenant Kilworth filled in for me last council meeting. I know did an admirable job, as he always does. That was because I was at the Maryland Chiefs of Police Conference in Ocean City, where Sergeant Lacy was once again, once throwing the white towel, right? Once again, he was recognized, but it was quite an honor, much bigger audience representing chiefs and sheriffs from across the state. It was truly an honor to be there with him, to be, to receive the award that he received. So kudos to him, and we're very fortunate to have him.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Junior CSI went off last week, went very well. In fact, Sergeant Lacy was there to lead that. Very well attended. This was the sixteenth year, as you know, was started by my predecessor, the late Chief John R. Williams, whom Sean worked for sixteen years ago. So it's been a good run, and we'll continue to do it, and the kids seem to appreciate it. There were some positive comments on social media from some of the parents. So it's a hit every year, and we're gonna keep doing it as long as we can. So very good community policing event.
Sure thing.
What else do I have here? So in reference to Junior CSI Academy, I put in through the MML, an award submission for, I think it was Community Engagement for the Municipal Achievement Award. We did not receive that. There was fifteen applications. I thought it was a very good nomination, showing the impact of what that program has on our community. But they have asked me to present at the fall conference on that, on that-
So you did win something.
In a way, I did. I guess. I'll bet that, but-
More work.
It'll be easy to talk about, because it's a program that I've been involved in since I've been here, and it's a very good program. So hopefully, it'll become a model for other municipalities to emulate. And lastly, as you know, Officer Ulrich resigned last week. It's very hard to lose him with so little time here with us, but we are working aggressively to try to replace him. We've announced it in all the usual locations. We've already gotten a couple applicants, one of whom I'm interviewing Wednesday. So we'll continue to move forward and try to fill that spot and get us back up to where we need to be.
I should've stopped bragging when I last bragged.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they said not to put him in the far corner desk in our squad room, because that's where every officer, every officer we've had that has left has had that desk. So we intentionally didn't put him in that desk, and it still, still didn't stop him from leaving. So that's the way of the world, so we'll continue to move forward and try to fill that.
Chief, just a question.
Sure.
Has anything gotten any better in doing the recruitments, or is it still as painstaking as it has been the last few years?
It's still painstaking. It's very difficult to get applicants here in town, and it's not just us, it's any small police department across the country. You're competing with the larger departments with better salaries, better benefits, better schedules, signing bonuses of up to forty thousand here in Maryland, one municipality, and over a hundred thousand out west. So it's very hard to compete with that, but it's not about the money, as our good town manager often has reminded me, and which I agree with. It's about finding the right fit, the right personality, the right person that wants to work in a small town and do the kind of things we do. So we're gonna take a very close look at the applicants and try to, try to find the next right fit for us.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir. Well, I did forget to mention, I kind of jumped ahead, I don't know, did you share the charts with everyone, the graphs?
No.
You did not? Okay. So Joe has tasked, tasked me with trying to come up with a way to better visualize our public safety report, and I totally agree with him. So we looked around for different types of mapping software, actually had our Lieutenant Queen working on it, since he's such a wizard with those sort of things. And lo and behold, I did find something that actually we already have, that I was unaware of, and I'll tell you why, in my, in my defense, in my defense. About two years ago, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office asked us to participate in sharing our data with them, so that they could put together statistics for the whole county. And we agreed to, only because, well, not only, partly because they agreed to pay for a system through LexisNexis. It's actually called the AVCC, the Accurate Virtual Command Center. They agreed to pay for that piece to our records management system, so that they could have our data from our records management system, because we have a different records management system than the sheriff's department does. So they agreed to pay for this piece, and unbeknownst to me, with that piece, there's mapping and graphing that's available to us, which I've recently found and just started to play with it a little bit, to get to where we can actually show you some visuals, and actually look at hotspots, and be able to show you, like, for instance, the thefts from autos that we've had over the last year, be able to put it on a map, so that you can see visually where these things are occurring, as well as what we're doing to deter these type of crimes by patrol checks, or foot patrols, or community policing, and that sort of thing. So I gave Joe a few of the samples, and it would be worth it for me to show you here, but maybe next time, we'll have those ready for you to look at, to ask more questions. And one other good thing about this system is, once we get to a point where I'm more comfortable with, with operating in it, we can actually release this to the public. We can actually give the public a website to go to, so that if the public wants to go and look at motor vehicle thefts, or thefts from autos, or any crime, they can bring up the same maps themselves. So it might be a good tool, to be more straightforward and transparent to our public, so that they can see the kind of things we're working on, so.
Be a good note for our tickler, for our ticker, across the top, ten minute ticker. Just saying.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's a great idea there.
Wow, it's a new and clean and fresh idea, the ticker?
How's your ticker doing right now?
It's slowing down.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, too.
Any questions?
Yeah. With the loss of, is that the newest officer that we've hired? I assume you're doing due diligence if there's any, you know, in reviewing, kind of if there's anything else we could-
Exhilarating.
I did do, very in-depth.
Yeah, so if there's anything as a council we can support in kind of the work that you're doing, you know.
Thank you.
I would hope you'd let us know if there's something that came up that, you know-
Sure. Thankfully, this officer did not leave to go to another police department, which is somewhat satisfying.
Hurts less.
Yeah. He left nevertheless, but it was to basically get out of law enforcement. He decided that it just wasn't working for him and his, you know, young family at home. His wife is also a police officer, so they have very different schedules, so it was difficult with their current situation to continue working. So he's got, getting out of law enforcement completely, so.
And then was at, actually, an MML dinner at Bex, and ended up talking to some local guys, and there was a recommendation or a suggestion, as we talked about community policing or police force, of maybe even as we get new officers, pairing them maybe with some residents, to help engage in that community side and helping officers feel more connected to the town.
Excellent idea.
So, just passing that along.
It's a good idea. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's a great idea. Cool. Anything else for chief from the council?
Nope.
Awesome. Thank you, chief. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Of course.
And that brings us to our council slash commission liaison updates. I'll start, because I usually end up forgetting after I listen to all of you. So I want to make a reminder announcement, because I mentioned this last meeting, that the Springfield Hospital Center will be having their annual five K run and walk on October eleventh, and registration is open. And you can go to itsyourrace.com, it's your race, race website, to register. Cost is thirty dollars, and that'll guarantee you a T-shirt if you register by September twenty-sixth. And I know that Councilmember Rees and I have registered and will be attending. So I encourage anyone and everyone who's listening to give some consideration to that. It's for a good cause with respect to mental health awareness and supporting our, one of, I guess, probably our largest employer here in town, or second largest. So T-shirt deadline again, September twenty-sixth, race slash walk. I'll be walking. Councilmember Rees, you'll be walking?
Yes.
Fantastic. October eleven, twenty twenty-five, the walk and race starts at nine AM, and you can pick up your pack at eight. And I would like you to start, because I want to ask you about your experiences with the Air Modelers, South Carroll Air Modelers Club.
So I'll do that one second.
Sure.
There was no planning commission meeting this month. The next one is planned for October sixth, seven o'clock here. I will not be able to be in attendance for that. I'm gonna be out of country and not available, just to let you all know. The, so I did have the opportunity this Saturday to do an, go to an open house. Thank you for sharing the information. Bill Davidson, who is the president for, let me just get it right, the South Carroll Aero Modelers Group, is over at Springfield Hospital area, and I've seen their sign before, when I've driven through and walked in the different areas, but I had no idea what it was. And so I got to go and see what they do this weekend, and there's about forty to fifty members. They have about ten percent of their members are junior members under the age eighteen, and they fly some custom-built and some bought remote-control airplanes right there, and they've, they have a lease from the state. And I'm not gonna do them justice, like Bill would probably try to have me regurgitate some of the information that he shared with me, but it was super cool. I had the opportunity to actually fly one of the planes while I was there. I did not anticipate that that's what I was going there to do. So when he's like, hey, why don't you fly one of these planes? I was like, okay, I guess I will. I brought my daughter Phoenix with me. I tried to get her to do it. She said, no way, daddy, I want you to do it. And so, but the way that it happened is that he had a remote controller, I had a remote controller, and as I understand, Mayor, you had the opportunity to do this as well.
He did not have to override me at all. I did it perfectly.
Yeah, and that did not happen for me. I actually lost the plane at some point out of the sky and couldn't even see it anymore. He's like, what are you doing? Please bring it back this way. So, you know, a little bit embarrassing, but all good. We were able to land the thing without breaking anything. And I was there for probably about an hour. While I was there, a gentleman and his son came up. They've had, they're gonna be at the farmer's market October fifth, and October, I think, twenty-sixth, to be able to share more information. They have a flight simulator on a laptop while he's there. That did bring a question, and I'm not sure who to talk to in reference to it, but is there a way to have power at the farmer's market? I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but in this case, what it would do if we did have power is someone like him would be able to come in and actually have like a TV, and be able to showcase some of the technology a little bit better, and might even allure more people into being able to do this. But this is right in our backyard, super cool. They have seven hundred feet of airspace, which apparently is from ground up, so they have seven hundred feet, and it goes for, you know, you know, I don't know, a good mile or so in one way or the other, and maybe even a little bit further than that. So you can go out there and do it. They did have one concern. One of the concerns is that there's a bunch of trees that have been planted, and you really don't get a sense of that issue until you're there and seeing it, and flying one of the planes and like, oh, I would've lost the plane in the tree, as an example for right there. So, you know, and that, I think there was a lack of communication that was happening between his club and whoever planted the trees, so, and he was asking for some help in reference to that, and just getting more familiar with different community partners like us. But it was awesome, highly encourage people to go do it. You get a ninety-day free membership. I can go out there again at any time in the next ninety days, and, you know, they're very welcoming, and will probably welcome me in. I don't know if I will or not, but, but nonetheless, very cool experience.
Awesome. Thank you for going and sharing that with us.
If Julie's not watching, she usually does, if she's not, I'll reach out to her about where their tents can be for that.
So there is, there is some power that they have? Yeah? Okay, that's great.
There's outlets in Fountain Park.
Okay, that's awesome.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dyer?
I have nothing, but even if I did, I couldn't follow that act.
Very good. Thank you.
I think you would love it.
I think I'd go crazy.
No, I actually, I thought you were gonna bite on the invitation. I assumed anyone would have been there.
Stay away from addictive substances.
Oh, very good. Okay, very good. Would you, would you like to go next?
You have to save us.
So Historic District Commission is meeting on Wednesday of this week to look over some signs and drawings, but actually wanted to kind of highlight an article in the Carroll County Times. We have an eighteen-year-old, Brennan Vandevere, who was recognized for chores of the hospital in Springfield, and also our museum curator was quoted in the article as well. And just a continued request that we look at a way in the Warfield Properties to honor the history of mental health treatment in Maryland, especially the work done at Springfield. And it sounds like pulling Brandon into some of that work might be really fruitful.
He and I have been in communication with one another over the last eighteen to twenty-four months, and even before he was hired in his current position. So yes, I keep stressing to him that if and when we ever are able to be in a position to have any sort of control over the use of those buildings, that that would be the intent. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
This past Saturday, Spark had their fall cleanup and a concert in Miller Cooper Park. Just want to thank all the volunteers, as well as the Spark commissioners and Drew. There's a Spark meeting this Thursday, September twenty-fifth, seven PM at the Townhouse. The Skate Jam is October fourth, from noon to four, and so I love the skates.
I know.
So that'll be at South Branch Skate Park. There's gonna be prizes and live music. Skaters are welcome, viewers are welcome, and no precautions required. The Halloween movie and costume contest is October twelfth at Miller Cooper Park, and the movie is Beetlejuice.
Yes, Beetlejuice, Beetlejuice. I'm not saying it at this time.
And Spark sends out a monthly newsletter, so if you're interested in getting added to it, I guess the best way is probably just to email parks@sexwell.net.
That's right. Thank you. Excellent. And I, I'm gonna take over the microphone again. I'll wait. Go ahead, Councilman Keith. Yeah.
Just some updates on the events. Trick or Treat on Main Street is Sunday, October twenty-sixth, from four to six this year. Fall Festival is October eighteenth, from twelve to four, is free entertainment for magic shows, drum band, critter zoo. Fall Fest is usually very well-attended. Craft Beer Festival, November eighth, from twelve to four. Please consider volunteering, we always need volunteers, and if you are volunteering, you may be included in a documentary about Main Street that's being prepared right now. Farmer's Market, still going on, all the way through, the last event will be October twenty-sixth, but still every Sunday through October twenty-sixth. DSC is planning a Diwali celebration on October twenty-fifth. Details still to come on that. And as Joe mentioned, the Oklahoma Avenue lights are up, look pretty cool at night. I really enjoy those. And a live art gallery is being implemented soon at our Main Street building, seventy-six block of Main Street. That's it.
Okay, well, before I ask if there's any more, before we adjourn, I would-
Maybe one. I hadn't been to the deli in the new building.
Yes, tell us what you think.
Awesome. I'm gonna tell my mom, she's coming down tomorrow when we're out of town, and they, she's really big into sardines, and they have all these different types of canisters of these different things, and so I think she's gonna look into it. And yeah, that is me trying to embarrass you, mom. But no, just really cool, great service. It was, it was awesome. I haven't been in to see it, and it looked fantastic.
Yep, it was really nice. Yep.
And you have to go with an appetite, or you're going to have leftovers. Yeah, it's good stuff. I would like to congratulate Councilmember Rees on her current exchange of vows and those that include marriage. So congratulations, Alex, to you and to Phil, and I'll ask you offline if, I'm gonna have to change how I address you at the table if you're keeping it, so. Anything else to go to order?
I just forgot to mention, I won't be here for the October fourteenth meeting. I'll be off a flight at that time.
I was gonna do it privately, but I may be in Detroit that time, too. I don't know, I guess-
Oh, we might not have corn then.
That's why I ordered up right this second. I'm, I may, I'd rather say I'm not gonna be here in case I get back in time. Well, that's great, but it looks like I won't be back from Detroit by then.
We can be two down.
Yeah, we can be two down.
Okay.
No problem. Yeah, no one else is allowed to leave.